I will call this meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen here in Millville, Massachusetts at 7:00 PM on September 6, 2022. And we have a full board as well as our Town Administrator, Peter Crusoe. I'm trying to get in the habit of doing that. And we will start with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Peter, announcements?
Just one announcement, which is that the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District Special Education Parent Advisory Council, known as CPAC, on October 2nd will be holding a Truckapalooza at the high school. It goes on a Sunday afternoon, October 2nd, 12 to 4:00 PM. And there'll be food trucks, touch a truck, car show, RC car, you know, radio-controlled car racing, raffles, and who knows what else more. So just pay attention for notices on Facebook and so forth. And I know that both communities are welcome there. So that's the only announcement that I have.
Okay, great. It's 12 to 4. Did you say that?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you said that or not.
Yep.
Any correspondence?
Yeah, I slipped into your files, not on the agenda, but because it came in about 4:00 this afternoon from council, just an email with an attachment, one of the KP Law updates. And it's an update regarding the host community agreement, the laws on host community agreements and the Cannabis Control Commission powers that may or may not impact our existing host community agreement that's operating and the one that's yet to be operated but has been executed, the agreement. And so I just encourage you to read through this. As the council summary says on the bottom of the second page, "The effect of the Act on the status of pre-existing host community agreements is still not entirely clear and will likely require further review by them." So we don't know what the impact is, but were we to be entering into a new host community agreement, the law is much different than it was the time we did them before. And that could have financial impacts as well.
Okay. Sounds good. Minutes, I don't know if anyone had, the last time I didn't review the July 11 minutes, this time I did review them. Did everyone else have a chance to review them? Any, I didn't catch anything.
No, I didn't see anything.
So looking for a motion?
Motion to accept the July 11, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Thank you, Richard. And Andrew. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye.
Aye.
And here's the signature page, if you just want to knock that out right now. Okay? And the 8:15 minutes are not available tonight, just to let you know.
Okay. And then next on the agenda, we have an appointment of Richard Andrade as a part-time police officer through June 30. I see Mr. Andrade is here, as well as Chief Coop. So if you both want to come to the table, please.
And I did provide copies in their packets of Richard's letter, Chief, which is a good one.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So if you want me to give you the highlights, or Chief, you want to give the highlights?
Yes, sir, only can.
Happy birthday.
Good evening, members of Select Board and Town Administrator, Crusoe. Richard came to us when one of our current offices learned he was going to be taking up a retirement. So we got him interested. And he comes with a pretty distinguished career, military veteran, six years in the Air Force, been with TSA, various jobs all over the world, probably, it's safe to say, for more than 25 years. He's been a part-time police also with Millbury Police, where he did obtain his Bridge Academy, minus some patrol hours. So he'll be working towards his patrol hours here. I would say clearly a benefit for our community here with his experience.
Yeah, so he's retiring in another week or so, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That's exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
And there was one line in his letter that really caught my eye, was that he's ready, willing, and able to work in Millville as a part-time police officer, and if necessary, go full-time once determined that that's the right thing. So that's good. You spent a lot of years in the K-9 program and took care of a lot of canines, pretty important part of the policing force, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Wow.
Great.
Great experience. Family must be proud of Dad, huh?
Yeah, thank you.
My husband did ROTC, Air Force, for undergrad, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. And then grew up in Fall River, so I went to Steng.
Oh, sure. And I went to Bishop Connolly.
Oh, did you? Okay, yeah, big rivals.
And then they put the two together.
Steng and Bishop Connolly together?
Steng and Connolly ended up coming together.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Steng closed, and Connolly, I think it was 1982 or '83. I had graduated in '81, but they joined the two schools.
So Steng, I graduated from there in '93.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Then it must have been another, oh, we had a all-girls school and then we had a Jesuit, which was Bishop Connolly High School. They came together.
Okay.
Now I'm showing my age now. 1982 is when they did the merger.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great. It was probably just another girls' school. I don't remember the name. So I don't have, I mean, this is a very detailed letter. Well, I at least scanned it earlier today. I didn't really have a chance to look at it, but I appreciate Chief Coop going through the highlights. And I mean, the military experience and the TSA experience and K-9 experience, I think, is all very relevant and kind of perfect for a part-time police officer. So does anyone have any other questions?
She seemed perfectly, well, overqualified almost.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Andrew, want to make a motion for the appointment?
Yep, I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Andredi as part-time police officer through June 30, 2023.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Done.
All's in favor, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I look forward to serving the community. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll get the name of that girls' school too. With my hair, it has fleeted my mind.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, sir.
Very much, Andrew. Thank you.
Good job, Chief, convincing him that this is the right place for this sort of thing.
Did you give him one last chance to run?
I have somebody in the much talent.
Yeah, that's right.
I look forward to it. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations and thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I like her. She has Kate's feedbacks.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Bishop Gerard.
Okay, I'm going to write down. I'll look it up.
G-E-R-A-D. We ended up merging. That was when I was leaving. They were bringing the girls in.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, any new business?
Nope.
Like no?
I think we'll save that for the next meeting, right?
Okay.
Yes.
And then old business? So the Board of Selectmen policies and calendar update. So I went through the policies. I thought we could kind of go through each section. So one, I noticed the mission and vision statement was not complete.
It's still to be completed. That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep, there's a piece missing there, yeah.
I just added a little bit and I'll, I know, I should have made, probably, I didn't know how it would work with everyone with their copy. So I'll read what I have. I think what might make sense is we can kind of go through this. Peter, maybe we can give this to you to go and get it all consolidated, and then we do like another review and then kind of be done. So I had, so this was there already, add a little bit. So "It shall be the goal of the Board of Selectmen to meet town residents' needs by ensuring public safety, encouraging recreational and cultural activity, supporting the school districts, and focusing resources on commercial development to deliver meaningful and beneficial services to town residents. The Board of Selectmen encourages feedback, comments, ideas, and participation of all town residents at all town meetings, board meetings, and committee meetings." I didn't know if there was anything else. Like a mission statement could be kind of, I don't know if there's anything else, like any other points that you might want to have in there? Like, we could kind of make some notes right now and then maybe have Peter develop a little more. Can you think of anything else? Participation is something we.
Encourage.
Encourage in our needing. And I have something on my Selectmen reports. Anything else? Do I say like fiscal responsibility or this, you know?
So I think, like, if you provide that input, right, and you all weighed in on it, in the meantime, we can look at the master plan. Because in the master plan, the town master plan, if I think it's 2018, has kind of a basic, you know, a number of goals and one or more of the, like this, some of these that are written here, even in this halfway drafted piece.
Okay.
Strike me as coming from the sections of the master plan.
Okay.
So it's worth eyeballing that, just to be sure this is.
Coincides.
As complete and coincides, yeah.
All right. So we can do that. And I think we maybe want to have some thoughts on fiscal responsibility and.
Yeah.
You know, doing what we can to stay in line. So general overview, I didn't have anything there. Anyone else? Okay. And then on the appointment policy, the only note I had is, because we have, we've had this discussion almost every time on like holdover status, I wonder if we should just have it here, like something, crystallize that. Because we always talk about if we don't appoint someone, they can kind of just stay in their role until we officially appoint them or unappoint them if they couldn't come to a meeting or something like that. But they're, so why don't we crystallize that, the holdover status?
Okay, yeah.
So that, because we always have back and forth with town council, and it happens every single time. We inevitably always have someone in holdover status. So we can just have it, you can stay in.
So it's legally okay, according to council, that people remain in holdover status if they haven't been reappointed. So let's say you get to August 15, even on somebody whose term has expired June 30. They can still function in their role, fully function in their role in holdover status. So I think you're suggesting memorializing that in here as part of the policy. So.
Yes.
Got it.
Exactly.
What's the length of time that somebody can work in a holdover status?
Unlimited, from what I recall from council's review of that. Okay.
But do we want to add, like, as a policy, we could have it be, you can be in holdover status for not more than six months. And at that point, you've just become appointed or something.
Hmm. Well, that's kind of where I was going with that, yeah.
Yeah.
So automatically lead to appointment if you haven't, if the board hasn't acted on that appointment? Sometimes people, you know, in the process of appointments, right? I send out a letter, I forget, you know, sometime in April, let's say.
Yeah.
Do you want to re-up in your position on whatever committee you've been appointed to? And not 100% return a response.
Right.
So then there's some chasing down and that sort of thing. Some people do resign. Most people do send back a response favorably, and it's a good thing.
Required to do that legislatively, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, it's, but the, you know, the challenge of Millville is filling the various boards and committees. So to the extent there's, the substance is that a person in holdover status is able to do it absent the form of the appointment.
Right.
Right?
So I think my only criticism now, we should probably put a deadline in there, you know, with the exception of investigation or anything like that, or contested appointment, because that.
Maybe someone, you can't be in holdover status for more than like five months, and at that point, we have to appoint them and like take action?
Right.
Like the board has to take action one way or the other?
Right.
Okay. We can do some, then why don't we do that instead? That's probably better, like, because that way it's not just like a de facto.
I don't know if that, I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, we have in the past had people held over for more than five months. So I don't know if we want to do that, just in case, because I know during the summer, that's at least two months that we don't really.
Meet.
Meet as much.
So six months through the end of the year, December 31st?
First time we had the building inspector and town treasurer, that lasted about six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's.
But you made appointments to extend them, right?
Yeah.
So you, you did abbreviated appointments terms, I think, in that situation. It wasn't that they remained in holdover.
Yeah.
But even after the appointments, if you recall those two, which, they got to October 31st, they were still allowed to remain functioning in holdover.
Yeah.
One did, one left.
Yeah.
So I, but I think it's a 90-day or it's a three-month or six-month is probably the right.
Yeah.
Window to the policy to be take action. Policies aren't set in stone. They are your preferred.
Methods.
Methods, right?
Okay.
And procedures.
Okay.
So that's, you pick your date timeframe, right?
Yeah. So then maybe we just memorialize what holdover status means and we can not act out the dates for now.
Okay.
And we'll try, you know, kind of mentally ourselves to get everything squared away within three or six months. Okay. I didn't have anything else until the debit card policy and form, which was page, tab number six. And my only comment there was, has Jane seen this? Because I know that she updated, she made a few changes, like when I had to sign the debit card.
I'll have her review it.
Yeah.
Just to be sure, yeah. Good question.
There's a form here that I had to fill out. It was quite, quite organized.
So it's two parts. One is the policy of doing it, filling out a form and department heads and how you go through that approval process. And the other part is the actual form itself. And that's more where Jane's input would come in.
Yeah.
Also partly the process, but the policy still is you all. Because we want to control the use of that debit card.
Right.
It can turn into an out-of-control situation. So, and it really, the burden of that is on the treasurer.
Yeah. So I think if Jane's okay with this, then I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Is it a debit card or is it like a P-card?
It's a debit card. It's.
Actually linked to a cash account?
Yep.
Yeah.
Wow.
You have to sign it out, like when we did the surveys, I had to sign it out, go to the post office. I paid the $117.
Gotcha.
And then bring it, and you have to bring it right back. And like, she goes, and I brought it back, like I went there and brought it right back, because I didn't want to keep it. And she's like, well, it'll be really fast. Most people keep it about a day. So it's not like anyone's.
Right.
Abusing it.
Yeah, we haven't, since I've been here, I've seen no abuse of it. I've seen a couple of situations where you, not everybody knew in that department how it was used at a particular point, but it wasn't abused.
Like a chain of custody, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm just surprised that it's a debit card, not like a traditional P-card or like a fleet card or something like that, you know?
Yeah.
So it's a debit card, so is it in somebody's, like it's the town of Millville, but it's in a specific person's.
Treasurer controls it. There's no specific name on it that, I mean, I've never touched it. I don't touch the money.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because if it is a debit card, it usually would have a specific person's name on it.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Maybe it's a different type, I don't know. Because, not that it would be a problem, but sometimes you never know if somebody looks at the name and then.
Right, right. I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, just as a curiosity.
Okay, so I didn't have anything else. And then until tab 13, which is meeting agendas, policy procedures, and public comment policy. Did you have anything before that, Richard? Okay. So one thing I found kind of surprising is it says, "A general public comment period is provided toward the end of each meeting." And I'm sure Andrew remembers, there was a period of time when there were Board of Selectmen meetings with no public comment.
I did bring this up back then.
Yes. Oh, did you? So I guess, like, we, I think this board is very, like, encouraging of public comment and feedback. How, I just want to make sure that there's always public comment, because then I know.
On the agenda in some fashion.
Yeah. And I just, so like, say, when none of us are on the Board of Selectmen, the next board has no public comment. That's it. We can't do anything? Would there be an opportunity?
Well, the people vote the people in. The people have the opportunity to, you know, this isn't, this, I think, when you're finally adopted everything or re-adopted, right, it will be on the website for all to see. And here's the other part, is you've added the typical, you know, I've drafted that based on what you all have decided.
Yeah.
That section right above.
Yep, the board.
Which clearly allows for comment even on agenda items, which wasn't specifically there, right?
Yeah.
So you really get good input from the public. But I don't know how you can make it so future generations of Millville Board of Selectmen.
I mean, short of making like a bylaw, I mean.
That's right.
This is basically, I mean, it's a guideline, so unfortunately, if they don't want to follow it, they can just change it whenever they want to and also just ignore it.
Yeah.
And that's.
Yeah, it's a work in progress.
Yeah.
For every board, frankly, right?
Okay.
But you're good with the insert? Do you see the way that was?
Yeah, I think that's perfect, yeah.
That captures?
I think that's perfect. Okay. And then also, we talked about the calendar. I don't know if the calendar should go here or if we want to have it as another section. And that, what I mean is that.
Right now, it's identified as section 23, I think, in the.
Let me see. Yes, it is.
Unfortunately, we don't have.
That's okay.
Yep. Page numbers. This is, you know, tabbed. It's a tabbed item.
Yeah. Okay. And then on the next section, which is the remote participation policy, I was wondering if Tim should look at that?
Okay, good idea. Yeah.
That where, because I read it and I was like, this looks fine. But I know Tim's been like, looking at, you know, we have to have this if we go remote and this and all this.
Yeah, this is, but, I mean, I didn't study this too closely. I remember when I sat in those kind of chairs in Sherburne, we implemented this, and it was more legal, legalese to do it properly. You have, if you've adopted a remote participation policy for meetings where someone could call in, you know, and they're on a speakerphone or whatever, you got to be sure they have the materials. You cannot, you know, use or do other things, not on the agenda and not, and everyone must be able to hear and speak and all that sort of thing. So that, that really is what this does, and that's why it's talking about general law, enabling authority and things like that. But, but still, we'll have Tim look at it.
Okay. And then I didn't have anything else until the social media policy. And actually, I didn't have any comments on it. Just a note that item number 17 requires that all postings, including regular town information alerts, shall be available to all members of the public without any access restrictions, which I greatly appreciate. And this is just for the Board of Selectmen, because if you have someone say, gee, I don't know if I want to make my account public like this. And so, one, if you're not posting town stuff, it doesn't matter, and this person doesn't really post town stuff. And second, this is for the Board of Selectmen as well. And she was like, okay. All right. So that's all that I had. I don't know if anyone had anything else on the policies. And Peter, I can give this to you and you can.
Yep.
Do you want to take it? And then you'll.
Sure.
See what I have.
Good. Scanning through real quick here. Let me see if I can find it. The surplus piece, I don't know if you want to add a piece in there regarding liquid.
Surplus goods and equipment, which is kind of a third of the way through the pile.
Oh, yeah, it's, I did.
Disposition of surplus goods and equipment. Yeah, this is, this is something that's always been kind of a nuisance. And I've done it on behalf of the state, and I've done it on behalf of municipalities. Sometimes the easiest way to get out of this thing is formalizing some sort of a contract with an online, you know, auction service. And most of those are free. They actually charge the buyers a percentage for, I don't know if that's something you want to add in here, kind of give us some flexibility to utilize an auction service, an online auction service, just to post it and go. Kind of takes away the minutia of having to post and advertise.
Right.
Streamlines it.
Streamlines it. And then you have an electronic database of everything that you have sold over the years, and you can pull it back at any time. So if there's a question as to who got what, where, and when.
Yep.
You can pull that. So only constructive feedback I have in that.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Actually, and I did just think of one more thing. So I had a, not really a comment, but just a question on the request for legal services.
Yeah.
So if anyone wanted to contact the attorney, like say, Jane, as the collector, treasurer collector, had a question and wanted to go to town council, would she go directly to them? And she'd have to talk with you to make sure that.
She would have, so, you know, I looked at that fresh for the first time in some time.
Yeah.
You know, there's a processor that we don't necessarily always follow, but they do have to go through me.
Okay, perfect.
Before they do it. Sometimes the clerk will go directly. And when she does, if she hasn't copied me, council in response always copies me. And I've yet to see anything the clerk has asked about that wasn't something I would ask about for clarification. So it's more to ensure that, you know, Joe doesn't, in building stuff, doesn't, you know, use council or, you know, anybody else. So it really has to go through me. And you are the ultimate control of that, you know.
I'd prefer Peter filter that as the main point.
Me too. And that's, and I would actually prefer that the town, like, all positions go through, even the town clerk.
Yes.
Correct.
Just to make sure that it's centralized. Like, I know when I email anyone, I always copy Peter, because I wouldn't want, like, none of us should be surprising Peter. What happened? What's this? I'd be like, oh, I forgot to tell you. Like, and I don't think, Peter should not really be surprising anyone of us.
Right.
Like, if something big comes up, I'm always like, hey, can you please reach out to Rich and reach out to Andrew, and we'll talk about this.
Chain of command.
Yeah.
Everything should have a flow.
All right, I appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah.
The only question, well, not question, but the only thing I would say on the town clerk is that the town clerk does oversee, isn't oversee anybody, but does deal with like open meeting law and like the legal. So if they do have a question, I don't know if we should have it, because, not that Peter would do anything wrong, I'm not, I don't think he would ever would, but in the future type thing, if we want to set that as a practice to have, because.
So I guess if she goes directly to town council, just make sure she sees Peter.
Correct. And like I said, he always does, she doesn't necessarily, but that's more an oversight, is the way I would describe that. And, but they are matters that need clarification. Often, even today, for example, I'm reached out to council regarding clarification of the town's policies on public records requests, because I differ in, I slightly differ than the, in the way that it happens through the town clerk. And she and I have back and forth on that. So we've agreed mostly in the right process, but we want to ensure the process we want to implement is legal. And the substance of it is, you know, some people walk up to the door and say, it's a public rec, you know, they don't even use the term public records, but like a copy of such and such, and somebody might run and get that. And I would prefer that everybody fills out a form.
Correct.
A public records request form. Council, so I'm clarifying with council, because I've seen him address this briefly in the past, and he cites mass general law and so forth. And he would argue, I've seen him argue that it doesn't matter the form of the request. It's still a request. The meter of 10 days, you got to respond and that sort of thing starts. I'm just trying to force the, that the fact that we have a policy through that office, and that we ask for somebody to fill the form out.
Right, some record keeping.
They might say, yeah, a public records request. They might say, geez, I don't want to do that. They might have the legal right, but it's still no harm, no foul to ask and request. And so, because the other, because I'm really looking for consistent treatment of every requister for public records.
Yeah, I agree.
So I agree with you on this, and I think that should be really formalized. And although you may not be able to force somebody, but can we offer them the ability to have assistance filling out the form?
Yeah. So like, we're there as a service anyway, right?
Right.
So we would. And we want to respond in a timely manner. But filling out the form helps clarify specifically what they're looking for, too.
Correct.
Because sometimes there's ambiguity in a request.
Right.
And/or it's too broad, and we want to try to refine it down.
At a micro level, right.
And the other piece is it gives us opportunity where, you know, we are allowed to charge a rate per hour. That's the lowest rate per hour. And we're to charge us so much per page of copies.
Right.
And so sometimes we, like, we'll get blanket requests that every town clerk gets in the state for such and such, like on host community agreements or something, right?
Right.
And, you know, the response to that can be very time-consuming and a lot of copies of papers. And so, and the request comes from somebody who hasn't really identified who they are.
Right.
So by having the process, the form process, it requires someone to fill out who they So by having the process, the form process, it requires someone to fill out who they are, right? That's part of it. And it allows us to estimate the cost. And so a valid response, initial valid response is it's going to take four hours at $20 an hour and it's going to be 320 pages or 37 pages at 10 cents a page. That satisfies the legal response requirement to a public records request until such time as they then pay for the, that cost. And then we provide the materials.
Yeah.
Go through the effort.
I just feel there's a value added to having a formal request process. Not necessarily for the, for the money or for the reimbursement of the cost, but to formalize the process and at least the town at times prepare for materials that are being requested and the reasons which they're being requested. So there's a value added to that.
Yeah. So, so we, we had a situation that's a teaching moment opportunity is how I call it. And we're exploring that and we'll know better certainly by your next meeting.
There'll certainly be more in the future, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, they come in a lot.
No, I completely agree with that. My main concern was that the town clerk acts more of as a watchdog. And if she doesn't, she's not able to contact the attorneys when she wants to.
Yep.
Because she has to constantly include the TA. That becomes a problem because let's say if the TA was, and not, again, you're not doing anything.
I agree. I understand.
But if, if somebody else in the position was doing something wrong, she would have to, or the town clerk would have to include the TA in that email reporting the, or asking a question about questionable activity that the TA was doing.
Email the town attorney and be like, hey, Peter did something bad.
Yeah, it's kind of like contacting your boss if like your boss was doing something wrong to HR, like it's kind of, creates an awkward circle.
I mean, I would think that, that in that situation, it would come back to the Board of Selectmen.
Didn't though.
Not in past, but I mean, probably should.
But you don't want to close out any avenues either.
No, I understand.
So I guess as much as she can include Peter in the request.
Yeah.
So if she, and if she thinks.
Her judgment at some point, she's an elected official, right? And so she has considerable authority and responsibility, which she does very well, in my opinion.
Right.
So you got to give her the benefit of the doubt in a situation like that, right? I think. Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. And then we also had a calendar discussion. So we're actually one week behind on our calendar. So at this meeting, we were supposed to invite the Finance Committee, the Town Accountant, the Town Treasurer, and then have on the agenda, do we need a special town meeting? Have a discussion on that. So we'll need to push that to the next meeting. And then I was also wondering if we want to have maybe Highway attend the next meeting as well? Because I think he would be the one to, are there other departments, I guess, maybe put out and?
Well, so the only other thought on Highway versus somebody else for the next meeting is the thought that there are some discussions with Uxbridge and Mendon regarding the intermunicipal agreement related to planning. And so whether you wanted the planning committee chair here or the planner.
Okay. So maybe do Finance Committee, the Town Accountant and Town Treasurer for an update and then planning. And then we hit up Highway, the first meeting in October.
Which is October 3rd.
Yeah, it's just a week later. And then we'll have a discussion at the next meeting regarding a, do we need a special town meeting or not? And then the only thing on the special town meeting is, we did ask the question on the surveys of how people want us to handle special town meetings. And it was more for emergency things. So we'll find out if there's any emergency things at the next meeting. I haven't heard anything. But so I think we're probably leaning towards no, but we'll have that discussion in more detail. Okay. So that's what I had on the calendar. And then, and I'm going to keep this in this book so I kind of always have, we can reference it.
So would you resubmit the calendar, resend the calendar around so that we're all, certainly we're looking at the same page, I think, right?
Yeah.
Because you did a lot of work to put this together.
Yep, I can definitely do that. And then the other thing to include the Town Accountant and Town Treasurer is I was wondering if there would be any update on free cash. I know we're way early, but.
Well, so part of their update, I think that's a fair question. What do you think about free cash?
Yeah.
Likelihood of timing.
Yeah.
And all I can say is that, based on invoice for services, that there's, we're much further ahead on bank reconciliations, revenue postings, all that sort of thing for FY '22. We're probably six months ahead of where we were a year ago.
Wow, that's great.
So.
Okay.
So there's a lot of effort there. That doesn't mean free cash will be six months.
No, no, no.
But, but we'll do our best. So I think there's certainly better things. And now we have a new treasurer who's very, you know, doing a wonderful job already. You can, I see a difference. So it's great.
Anything else on, for the next meeting that you think we should have regarding the calendar? And if you, I have it if you want to take a look. Yeah, I'm very impressed that we're only a week off. One meeting off.
Yeah, I think Highway is definitely important to get in before the snow flies.
Yeah.
Yep.
Maybe the first October one. So that, and that's just a week later. Just note that the, I can't make the 19th. The, our next meeting was supposed to be the 19th.
Right.
I'm traveling, so it'll be the 26th.
That's fair.
I know. I'm sorry, I can't, I just can't be here and without me, there's no quorum. So there's no point in having the meeting.
So you'll also have at that meeting an ARPA update.
Oh, yay.
Okay.
Great.
Which might include Sauerbean here.
Perfect.
If I can twist arms. Which is consistent with finance update as well.
Great. That would be great. Okay. Anything else on the calendar? Next meeting? Okay. Public forum? Think we're probably okay.
That's when we do a hard cut to the empty seats.
They're looking crap.
That's right. Selectment reports, Richard, anything?
I have nothing, nothing that we haven't already talked about or discussed at this point in time, so.
I'm good.
So the only thing I have is a member of the Planning Board and the Cultural Council mentioned that they need people for both those. And we actually have a vacancy on the Capital Planning Committee for a citizen, on the Finance Committee. And you can see, we only have three people here for the Board of Selectmen. So the elections, you know, poll papers in February to run for Board of Selectmen. But we really need more people to participate. I will say that especially, I haven't been on the Planning Board or on the Cultural Council, but for the Cultural Council, they need to have five members in order to get their grants and their four. So we're going to miss out on actual money without someone. So I, I posted that on my Selectmen account on Facebook, but I'll, I'll maybe make that a little bit more clear that that's, that some of the things are missing. And then I will say, as a member of the Capital Planning Committee and I know someone on the Finance Committee, like they're pretty flexible in how they schedule meetings. If you're like, oh, I don't know if I can make these meetings. Like the way that we always do on Capital Planning was, hey, here are three dates. What one can everyone make?
Yeah.
So it's not like these are hard and fat. Like our meetings are every other Monday and we have to, you know, make a significant schedule change when someone can't make it. And I again apologize, I can't, that we have to move the next one. But the other committees are much more flexible in their scheduling and they can really work with you. So, and they're still on Zoom, many of them, to provide an additional level of flexibility. So if you're like me and you have one parent traveling or like, what am I going to do for childcare? You can raise that to the chair and they'll, they can do a Zoom meeting. So that's my little spiel. And because we are such a small community, you can make quite an impact. I'll say that. I feel like this board's done quite a bit, just the three of us. And certainly on the Capital Planning Committee, working with Ranfa and Representative Soto, we were able to get monies for our brand new ambulance. So they're doing more for us as well. So you can make quite an impact in Melville.
How many members are on the Planning Board at this point?
Four, I think.
Yeah.
So they can barely do special permits at this point?
The problem is some of the special permitting, they need a full five-member committee. That's correct.
Yeah.
And so one of the challenges was that they had one member who couldn't make many of the meetings and therefore they weren't able to do the special permit. So that member voluntarily resigned and freed up the space. So now they're looking to fill that space. And so that would be one of these where the two committees would appoint a person if somebody steps up for that. The other thing I would plug for is the Green Committee, Green Community Committee, which has no members right now. And there's real money available for the town and Green Community Grants, although most of the low hanging fruit has been obtained in that for the last couple of grant cycles. But still, that's a, that's a committee that could be very, you know, very interesting for someone to want to kind of take the lead on to, and then bring some folks on. That would be very helpful. And so I hope, hope we can encourage somebody that way.
Both those boards are pretty important. Quick thing, probably not, but would we be able to condense some of the boards, certain boards?
I don't know. They have specific charters, but that's a fair question.
Just because I don't think we would be able to, but doesn't hurt to look, I guess.
I think it's more that can somebody be a dual role type of board or in a, serve on multiple board? I mean, that, you already have that now.
Yeah, you can serve on multiple boards. I was just wondering if like you could, that way you don't have so many little boards that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might be annoying to go to like a couple of meetings if you have to have.
Like to consolidate planning and zoning as an example.
Yeah, you can't do those, but.
No, that's not going to work. Yeah, those are.
The Planning Board does like the decisions and the zoning board is like the policing of that, those.
Oh.
So they, yeah, they, conflict, but.
Okay.
But maybe like green and parks and rec maybe or something?
Yeah, right, right.
Does have similar tasks. Well, not really, but.
They're related. You could like, they're tangential. You can make that argument.
Yep. Interesting.
Yeah, that's a question for council.
Yeah, speaking of.
I know.
Yep. Okay.
Anything else from Selectment Reports? Okay, Peter.
Three quick things. How's that?
Sounds good.
One, here's a copy of the check received from the insurance company for the theft by Justin Cole, who's now serving his 39-month sentence. Okay?
Hundred percent.
Full hundred percent reimbursement from the insurance company. It's treated as miscellaneous revenue. Two, here's a page listing a bunch of transfers we get through the state, one of which is our second half of the direct payment of ARPA, 170 grand. So we've gotten all but the last 315 grand of ARPA money in the bank. And I expect that 300 grand any day now. So that's just nice to see the funds flowing that way. Separately, I have a letter here from Mass DEP. Spent a fair amount of time in meetings and correspondence with them, as well as working with our PhD, Dr. Richard Gulick, to get them to revisit the requirements that they put us through in terms of testing, monitoring and so forth. And they did agree that some of the testing could be reduced. And so here's a letter that does that. I don't know the financial impact. It's 12 or 15 grand. You know, on a 48-grand budget, that's meaningful. But, you know, we, we, you know, our sampling sites for lead and copper have reduced from 20 to 10 over six months, you know? Our sampling on total collar form reduced from four to three, you know, on a monthly basis. So we've had some meaningful things. For total haloacetic acids or, I don't know, THM and haloacetic acid byproducts or disinfection byproducts, we've reduced the measurement, the number of samples, the locations of samples, a fair amount. And on and on, total organic. So I just, that's good news that we're working nicely with the state in that regard. And they finally come to see the light of our unnecessary efforts that we've had to take. So that's all I have.
Great. Items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to meeting?
Nope.
Okay. The next regular meeting will be Monday, September 26th. We already did signatures, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at, I don't have the time.
Seven forty-five.
Oh, seven forty-five.
Seconded.
Wow.
Any discussion? Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Nice, quick 45-minute meeting.
Well done.